Good evening. It's four o'clock. Welcome to the Albany City Council Work Session, Monday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to call the meeting to the order. Would you please do a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alexton.
Here.
Councillors Newton.
Present.
Novak. Montague.
Here.
Kaczynski.
Present.
E.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
Councillors present, Your Honor.
Councillor Novak has an excused absence today.
And just a reminder, it's Newton Azor now.
So is there any business from the public, Gabe? So no one signed up? Would anyone in the chamber like to address the council this evening, President of the Republic? Thank you. Next on to Nitrogena Street Maintenance Public Opinion Research. Stacy Bel Castro, pages two through five in your packet. And I understand there will be someone joining us virtually to express their opinions or concerns. Are they with us yet?
Consultant Consor, who completed the public opinion research here in Albany, will be attending remotely. Before they get started, I was gonna just do a quick little intro and recap of some of the action items that we discussed at last month's council meeting on June twenty-sixth. So Public Works hired the consultant firm Consor to complete research here in Albany. This was completed during the past few months. The research was completed to help us understand the community's views on the condition of Albany streets and also gauge the community's support for funding alternatives to help maintain Albany streets. Director Chris Bailey shared preliminary results of this research during the council meeting last month on June twenty-sixth. At this meeting, she also provided council with an overview of the presentations that we initiated last August, almost a year ago, to discuss with council the street conditions here in Albany and then also street funding in Albany. At the conclusion of this meeting, after council discussion, there were two action items that we went away with. One was that staff will be bringing a draft ordinance for council consideration and discussion that would establish the ability to create a street maintenance fee. We will be bringing that draft ordinance to the council meeting in August. I believe that's August seventh. The other action item was council requested a presentation on the final results of the public opinion research that Consor completed. And so this afternoon, I see that they are here online. There'll be two people with Consor, Aubrey Konig and Clark Worth. And then another person from, I'm probably gonna get this wrong, but I think it's D H M Research. John, I'll let you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to the folks that are attending online.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you. So my name's Aubrey Kanig with Consor. Hopefully, my sound is coming through okay, and I am also going to get my screen share going so we can walk through a few of our findings. Let me know if that's looking okay on your guys' end.
Yes, we have it.
Perfect. So as I said, I'm Aubrey with Consor. I'm joined by a couple of colleagues. Thank you, Stacy, for the introduction. So Clark Worth is also with Consor and then John Horvick from D H M Research. And our two companies do a lot of this work, type of work together. So we have some good things to share with you this evening. And all three of us are gonna be available for questions if you have them following the presentation. But we wanted to kick things off with a little bit of an overview. I'm gonna walk through kind of what our process was. I'm gonna have John share a little bit about the methodology for two of the, two of the parts of our research effort. I'm gonna share some of the key findings, very high level, but there's more detail in our, in our summary reports. And then have Clark kind of pick things up towards the end with suggestions for a path forward. So why did we embark on this research? We really were looking to answer a few key questions here, or help the city, help you guys assess community views and opinions on a few key questions, including current street conditions, what are the perceptions around that? Priorities for improvement when it comes to the transportation system. Awareness of current funding, you know, what are, where do people think this money comes from right now? Is it viewed as sufficient or not? And then a willingness to pay more for street maintenance. So we did a couple of things. Actually, I should, I should look back here. So through staff presentations, Chris Bailey and others, you've heard a lot about the need here. But this was really our starting block, was understanding that when it comes to the city's transportation system, arterials and collectors need ongoing maintenance. The local streets, there's a number of them in poor condition or in fair condition that also could use attention. And there's a funding gap when it comes to those different parts of the transportation system. So that was kind of our starting block of what could be done. We did our opinion research in kind of a qualitative and quantitative fashion. We did most of this work pretty, pretty quickly. We did fifteen interviews with community leaders, had a chance to speak with folks on the council. Thank you, guys, for your, for your time, as well as others from the Advisory Commission, Transportation Advisory Commission, the Budget Committee, and local businesses, the Chamber, and others. That helped us get off the ground, and we took that input and used it in the focus groups. There were two of those in person with voters. And John's gonna talk a little bit more about this here momentarily, the methodology. That, the findings from that focus group effort led into the voter survey, which was the last piece of the opinion research. Three hundred, a sample size of three hundred participants focused on Albany voters. And that happened in June, and then we've been going through the analysis and, and findings to develop a report. So, John, I'm gonna give you a chance just to, to speak to the methodology here.
Sure. Thank you, Aubrey. So I'm John Horvick, the Senior Vice President of D H M Research. And you can see the back of my head there in the photos, I had the opportunity to moderate these focus groups. The focus groups are, so in-depth discussions with a representative group of people selected from the community to understand what they think, but importantly, how and why they feel that way that they do. So with the survey, which we did as well, you can ask people, you know, what they think, kind of yes/no questions, support or oppose questions. But it's really difficult to dig into sort of those deeper feelings, reasonings, emotions maybe that they attach to an issue. They can also importantly bring up topics or perspectives that weren't obvious to us as researchers heading into the project. So we did conduct two focus groups. I'll say that, you know, eight to twelve people. We recruited twelve, and we usually sort of hope that about eight or nine show up. But we had a great turnout. People were eager to discuss with their community members about issues in the city. So we had twenty-two people end up showing. Folks are paid, they're our experts, and they're giving their time, and it's important to honor that time by showing that value and money, so they were, they were, they were paid to be there. These are two-hour sessions, so we had an opportunity to go in depth about how they feel about the community, how they specifically feel about transportation, and some of the funding options available to us. And then in any focus group, it's important to give people an opportunity to contribute the best way that they can. So some people are really good at speaking in front of a group about their opinions, and, and others are better at writing things down and sharing things more privately. So the focus groups are a combination of both group discussions and what we call written exercises, where people have an opportunity to write their thoughts down on their own, usually before we discuss them with the group. But we collect both, and both inform our analysis. And then from that analysis, we learn that, use the findings to to learn about people think about transportation, but also to inform how we design the survey, so I can talk about that too. So survey methodology is changing as people's expectations about how they're gonna be reached are changing as technology changes. And so one thing is to know is that we use multiple approaches to reach people. We reached voters. We got the list of voters from the Secretary of State and called people from that. So we know these people in the community, we know exactly where they live, and, you know, their vote history and all that information that's in the voter file. We reached three hundred people representative of voters in the community. We set what we call quotas by the criteria that you see there in the slide, things like age and gender, race, education, area of the city by ward, party registration, things of that nature, to ensure that what we got back was actually representative of the voters in the community. The margin of error is five point seven percent for sample sizes large. And then because people have different preferences for how they're gonna be reached, we did use different approaches to reach folks. So some people were called with the interviewer, traditional live interview phone call, and yes, cell phones, of course, too. But some people don't wanna talk to an interviewer at all, and would prefer to get a text message where they can take the survey on their phone, or they can throw it to another device if that's their preference. Because those preferences exist, and we wanna make sure they're reaching a wide range of people, we used multiple approaches. So we, phone calls, text messaging, quotas to ensure they are represented in sample. We reached three hundred folks with a margin of error of five point seven percent.
Great. And I think there were some methodology questions that came up in the last council session, so we wanted to make sure we covered, covered that here today as we dip into the findings. So what was included in the council packet was kind of the, the frontispiece of these three efforts and the collective findings. I'm going to walk through some of those, some of those now. So thinking back to that kind of first key question, what's the view on street condition? What, what we found is that, you know, transportation is an important issue in many communities, but the fact that it nearly rivaled homelessness as a key issue for, for participants in the, in the surveys is a little bit surprising. So it's definitely on folks' mind, and you can see the eighteen percent are particularly interested in road condition and the quality of the roads. So that fits right into, you know, what we were interested in learning a bit more about. So also looking at condition of the roads. In terms of kind of measuring satisfaction with city services, this space is one where people are, are not particularly satisfied in, in services. It's sort of the, the highest dissatisfaction level. When we asked about other types of services, you know, parks got some glowing remarks during the focus groups, you know, police was feeling pretty good about it. This, this is a space where people caught their eye, and it's something that is, that is definitely on their mind, that there's opportunity to do better. And I think in many ways, that comes back to results that they're seeing in terms of driving around on streets. So still kind of sticking to that first question, you know, what are the views on the condition of local streets? People really do have a sense that it's the neighborhood streets that are, that are worse. You know, arterials, collectors, people feel pretty good, they're doing okay in terms of keeping up, upkeep with maintenance, but when it comes to the neighborhood streets, that's really seen as the, the issue. And the alignment around this as a top issue, and also that it is the local streets and that it's specifically maintenance, you know, was definitely a strong point that came through in all three phases of the research. All right, so priorities for improvement. When, when we asked in a few different ways what, what people were most interested in, seventy percent said worst first, you know, deal with, deal with the streets that are in the, the worst condition. And these are a few images that are pulled from past presentations using the P C I index. Something that was interesting that came forward, so you could see seventy percent said worst first. Something that was interesting that came forward in the focus groups initially and a bit elsewhere was this, I, this perception that some of the, the older and the lower-income neighborhoods might be neglected in terms of the street maintenance. And in some ways, that parallels with the figure of the city local street condition that's on this slide as well, where you can see the, the red, which is the poorer-conditioned streets, is sort of concentrated in your, your historic neighborhoods and the older neighborhoods, whereas the newer developments, which are obviously going to have a little bit better road shape, you know, are, are in a different space in their, in their life. All right, so we also asked about awareness of, of funding. So also interesting, you know, a few, few voters really understand how street maintenance is funding, and this is a kind of it's a barrier for folks to think that more funding could be needed because they're not quite sure how it's getting funded today and where, what the results of how the funding is working are, how that's, that machinery is, is in effect. So forty percent are unsure if the city has sufficient funding for street maintenance. Just twenty-one percent said the city doesn't have enough money. And you can see that there's that big, you know, kind of opportunity to fill in some, some knowledge here. When we asked people kind of what, what, where they think the money is coming from, you know, during the focus groups in particular, most people turn to taxes as the, the likely source. All right, so support for additional funding. So kind of building on that lack of clarity about current sources when it comes to just the average person in Albany, we, we looked at two potential funding sources moving forward. In the interviews and the focus groups, we asked about both of these. In the survey, we narrowed in on a particular scenario for a, a street maintenance utility fee and asked people to react to that particular scenario. So what we, what we found is that a local gas tax does not have support in part because of the electric vehicle question. That really is a barrier for folks. The sense of equity from a usage-pay scenario is undercut by this fact that E Vs don't contribute through a local gas tax. And in addition to that, there's this sense that it's not a, a particularly stable or dependable source of funding moving forward. In terms of the street maintenance fee, it was seen as somewhat fair because everybody pays and definitely more dependable because it's, it's a predictable source of revenue. But there was still only thirty-five percent support for that funding fee, but comparatively larger than, than the local gas tax. All right. So the next thing we're gonna do is just take a little closer look at those two sources. So transportation utility fees, as you guys have heard, you know, these are, are widely used. Thirty-plus Oregon cities have these in place ranging from five to sixteen or so dollars per month on a utility bill. When we asked your, your community, Albany voters, the best reasons to support a utility fee, and we assessed different, we looked at pros and cons on both sides and gauged support. These are the things that stood out the most to, to, to Albany voters and community members, that the money is dedicated to street maintenance. It's, it's for that purpose, and that purpose alone. That the funding is directed to streets in the worst shape, which I mentioned before, that that worst-first idea was very compelling to folks. Cost-effective maintenance is better than replace, replacement, so the preventative idea is something that is on people's minds as well, understanding that it will likely cost more if, if delayed. And kind of running to failure mode, that doesn't, doesn't save you any money in the long run. And then also that a street maintenance fee would produce immediate concrete results. And this was something we heard in the focus groups, that people were really interested in outcomes, and it's part of why we tested a particular scenario during the survey when we took that kind of third phase of the research effort and, and got the three hundred sample size. All right, so I'm gonna turn it over to Clark now to walk through recipe for success.
So what does this all mean? I think we, again, we looked in-depth at two potential funding sources. One was the local gas tax. Aubrey mentioned thirty-plus cities around the state using a gas tax with a range of one cent to ten cents a gallon. So it's proven to be effective in other communities, but tremendous drawbacks in, in the eyes of voters. One of the big drawbacks for you is it requires election success. You know, you have to take it to voters, and right now, voters are not, don't have the local gas tax in their hearts in Albany. So the second option that we looked at was the street maintenance utility fee. And the, the words that we're using for it are important because one of the things that we learned is that folks want to understand where this money is going. They wanna make sure that it's dedicated to streets. And so a lot of communities have traditionally called this just a transportation utility fee or tough. But that's not very descriptive. So we're suggesting the branding for this as street main, maintenance utility fee, which clearly states the purpose of the funds. The second recipe ingredient, our recipe for success, is making sure that you're asking for the right amount, and that's, of course, a subjective decision, because you wanna make sure it's enough to do the job. But on the other hand, we think that it would be called out if it's not in keeping with what other cities are asking for. Again, thirty-plus cities, the range, typical, typical ranges, about five dollars a month to sixteen dollars a month. And what we tested in the results through a telephone survey was sixteen dollars a month, which gets you six million dollars a year. And if you recall the chart that Aubrey showed earlier and that you've seen in the past with staff is that just handling the poorer-conditioned local streets is over eight million dollars a year. So this, this starts on the, starts you on the way, but it doesn't get you all the way there alone. But it, but it's, it makes a significant dent in that problem of local streets in poor condition. A third ingredient that we suggest is publicizing the immediate results here. Being specific about outcomes, which Aubrey mentioned. So we actually tested a very specific outcome. We tested a longer-term outcome, and we found that voters were interested in what happens in the first year. They wanna see right away what happens. And so that in the, the outcome that we tested was fifty-two blocks reconstructed, repaved in the first year. And again, fifty-five percent support for that is a good reason to back this initiative. The fourth ingredient for success is targeting the local streets in the worst condition. Aubrey mentioned that. You could see that it was strongly supported. Seventy percent of the people surveyed thought that should be the number one priority for these funds. The fifth ingredient is emphasizing cost savings of repair versus replacement. We have found this works in other cities too, in passing either transportation utility fees or gas taxes. The, the idea that if you invest a dollar now in repair, that that saves a seven to twelve dollars. So the leverage that you get on this long-term amounts to great savings. Or in your case, if you weren't invested, basically what happens is you just build a larger and larger liability going forward. The sixth ingredient is ongoing public education. We, the numbers that Aubrey showed there, forty percent of the people have no idea, and only twenty-one percent have a clear idea that the city doesn't have enough funds. Since that is the situation, there'll be a need for some ongoing public education to explain it and keep explaining it so people understand that these funds are sorely needed in Albany, that, and that they're really, there are not alternative sources of funds. If you think back through history, transportation was largely funded through federal gas tax and then state gas tax. And the federal gas tax has not been increased since nineteen ninety-three. And the state gas tax, which has been increased a couple of times, is showing signs of age and that because of electric vehicles and more fuel-efficient vehicles, the revenues from the gas tax statewide now are flat or even now slightly declining. So the gas tax alone won't, won't solve it. So there's, there's not a solution. There needs to be a local solution for our local problem here, making that part of the public education message. And then finally, recognizing that this amount won't be enough. Remember, if even if you adopted at six sixteen dollars a month, that produces an a an estimated six million dollars a year. Just handling the local streets in poor condition costs eight point four million dollars a year. So you really are going to have to move on right away. And we think that can be part of the public education process. So you could, at the same time, with initiating this street maintenance utility fee, you could begin a process right now, community based process using the Transportation Commission or a task force of some kind to work on pinpointing other funding sources. So that is a quick overview of what we did and what we learned and what we recommend here under the recipe for success. We the the advantage of the transportation utility fee doesn't require a vote after your vote. That is, you can enact it without taking it to voters. And at the same time, be explaining what the purpose of this is and how we're going to use the funds. Great public education opportunity in this.
So those are the things that we wanted to share. It's a very quick one run through, I know. But we want to respect your time and and just kind of give a recap of some of those key findings. But we'd welcome any any follow up questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Counselor Newton Azor?
Yes. I was curious. I asked at the previous meeting when we met to discuss your findings. Did you guys know how many electric vehicles were in Albany, were registered to addresses in Albany?
So so we don't have that data. But I would say what we heard from the perception, which is kind of what we're measuring in our opinion research, is that people have the sense that that is definitely a growing pool and that it is. Should I want to say this? It's seen as it's seen as unfair that those folks wouldn't be contributing to a gas tax. When everybody benefits from roads, you know, the idea of a usage fee being equitable just kind of gets undercut because there are these.
Was there a question asked about larger vehicles, like large trucks that weigh a lot more than other vehicles or even semis that were utilizing our streets, our residential roads? I know in Word one, we have, you know, the the semi truck training goes through our residential streets. Was that brought up at all? Or even the discussion of maybe some of the larger trucks or vehicles that are on on our roads paying their fair share?
We 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 didn't ask that. We know however, they do pay more. Oregon has what's called a wait mile tax, which taxes at a different rate those larger and heavy vehicles. So they do pay more proportionate to the size of the vehicle.
Can you please get me information on that? I don't believe it would would apply to some of the larger trucks that are we're seeing on the road, you know, that are. Yeah, we can ask staff to do that.
Counselor Monica, you had something?
So I I thought it was interesting that the citizens of the two biggest concerns we're discussing today homelessness and and streets. So just want to remind everybody, the city is working on the things that we care about. But back to your results. Going back to your question, from what I could find, the percentage of registered vehicles that are electric is actually pretty low. I think in Oregon, it's like one percent. So I know there's a perception that that they're not fairly paying their share, but that's a very small percentage. And the majority of the damage that's done on the roads roads is by gas powered vehicles. So obviously, we have some education gap there that we need to, you know, start getting the word out. I really liked your recipe for success, number seven. I agree, this isn't going to be enough. And this is why I've advocated for us to also start that education and just with the public about the need for additional funding source, which could potentially be a local gas tax. I think that the local gas tax is a is is an opportunity to capture those who are filling up here, especially like Costco. I know there's quite a few people that drive in from out of town to fill up there. We could capture those revenues and also charge those people that are using our roads or driving to and from our our services here in Albany. Think oh, the other question is, are we going to be sharing these results with our surrounding cities? I think they would might find it interesting to to know this information. I think that's all I had for that. Thank you. I had another question.
We'll listen to the accountants first and I'll come back. Counselor Smith, do you have anything?
I'd just comment that the League of Oregon Cities has all the information that you could possibly want about EVs, gas tax revenue and the wait mile tax.
Counselor Ray?
I'm good.
Counselor McGee? Go ahead, Counselor Newton.
Something I saw that was missing from this presentation. Thanks. Something that I saw that was missing from this presentation. You're looking at surrounding cities. I feel like they've implemented more of a multi pronged a multi pronged tool of utilizing a gas tax in addition to bond measures and not implementing the transportation utility fee. Like, for example, I know that Eugene is has a bond measure that's coming up and has been successful, I believe, five times. Springfield also has a bond measure. And I believe also Happy Valley, they they have one. So I'd love for us to also look into having our community vote on a bond measure in addition to adding a gas tax instead of just, you know, adding in a fee. I want I want buy in and input from our community on, you know, a solution for Albany that's as unique as Albany.
I think one thing that I can offer is that the bonds came up as an idea, an out of the box idea along the way through our opinion research from a handful of folks. And part of what was attractive about that is part of what people were seeking with these other funding sources is a sense of what what the outcomes will be. Kind of that very clear picture of what will be improved and and how that's going to roll out. And I think another piece of bond side of things is the idea that it has a a set end date as well. And and that, you know, kind of setting that calendar and having some clarity there was something that folks were were interested in.
So.
I've recalled your your past successful bond measure too, I should say.
Go ahead, who else is going for you guys? Clark, are you going to say something?
I was just going to say I would also mention that our team has worked on transportation bond measures that passed in other cities as small as twenty million dollars and as large as three hundred million.
So at the Oregon Mayor's Convention Conference this last week, homeless as streets, measure one ten and after effects of that came up several times. There's also litigation that's case law that's going on right now before the Supreme Court and State Supreme's Court. But streets was definitely one of the issues that most of the mayors were talking about. And they showed examples of the keynote speaker showed examples of there's some of their side streets and some of the neighborhood streets. And they're worse than ours. And so this is a real issue for smaller towns as well. But your results, I like the results. I know that we have public safety levy coming up, so putting two things on the ballot, one is going to go down. The street maintenance fee, it doesn't capture in my in my mind, doesn't capture those folks to come here for our concerts from other cities. It doesn't capture any uses for people just passing through here, going to different places. Because people drive through Albany for everything. It's hub city. So we need to figure out a way to capture some of those dollars that that those fees coming through as well. I agree with Counselor Newton Azor on that. It was like last week in our first concert in Fourth of July, approximately fifteen thousand people. When it came to the concert, I would say a lot of those did not live here. So that opportunity is missed if we do not do something other than the street maintenance fee.
Another comment about that. The the street maintenance fee would be an ongoing source of income, whereas bond measures are one time source. Good for big capital projects, but it's not on it doesn't provide ongoing money for maintenance. And the street utility fee would also provide ongoing money from the people who live on those streets that that are in such terrible condition.
I agree. So City Manager, would you like to say something?
Not at this point.
Thank you. Counselor McGee?
Would that also include those undeveloped roads? Because a lot of people have been complaining about those, which are just under underdeveloped. Regardless of the street themselves, they just looked, they just underdeveloped there. I've heard that the city's never going to do anything about it. They've been complaining about it for twenty thirty years. So I think we should consider that too while we're talking about roads in general.
Thank you. Stacy, would you like to say anything else in closing?
Yeah, thank you to Aubrey, Clark and and John for providing that presentation. And just in closing, we will be bringing an ordinance with a straight street maintenance fee that counsel can discuss and deliberate at the August seventh meeting. And with that memo, we can also discuss the options of the the gas tax and and the bond. I know in past presentations, we did present those options as alternative funding. And and we do have a lot of compelling streets that could be put on a bond. Historically, we've typically put arterials and collectors. We were successful. We don't really have arterial and collectors currently that I think would would be compelling to the public, but maybe maybe a local street bond package. And then the the gas tax, it's definitely still on the table. It's just something that requires a lot of outreach and and public education along with the street maintenance fee. So.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Look forward to that memo when you come back.
Yep, thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, I got it right here, is camping and shelter ordinances, Christian Dell, pages six through twenty eight of your packet.
And Mr. Mayor, before you start, you have to go to Wednesday night's material to find the one staff memo that's written about this. So we should have had a staff memo in for the Monday evening items as well. So next time we will.
Thank you. So we're just getting information tonight and not no action at this point, right? That's what I understand. Okay, thank you.
That's great. Good evening, Counsel.
Evening.
I'm going to kind of take it out of order so that it's a little easier to understand, try to hit the easy points. And then we'll go into the stuff that I think we'll have more questions on. So sorry if I'm jumping around, it's just hopefully to simplify everything. So first, I'm going to start with pages eighteen through twenty and then twenty five through twenty six. So these proposed ordinances are currently ORS statutes that we already are governed by and bound to. However, by bringing them into the AMC, it allows staff to more easily use them, give power to a few more people to use them within the city. So within those codes, which would be get the exact one, temporary emergency shelters and the conversion into shelters. Those are pretty much word for word from the ORS, just bringing that into the statute or into our AMC. Not really sure if you guys had questions on those specifically. And on that, I may call Mr. Rutgers up to answer.
Counselor Monica.
If I cannot, but we will try.
You have a question?
Yes. A couple. On page twenty two, it talks about no combustible internal combustion engine.
I'm not on that one yet.
What was that?
So I'm on eighteen through twenty and then twenty five to twenty six. I will definitely answer the questions on that one when we get there. Awesome. So eighteen through twenty is the adoption or sorry, not the adoption. Is the temporary emergency shelters, it's eight point oh six. Again, the ORS one. No questions on that one? Okay.
Counselor Newton Azor?
Yeah, I was curious. So I'm looking at Wednesday's packet. Can we review? I'm not sure. Just to make sure that everything's in here. The it is unlawful for any person to camp in or upon any public property or public right of way if the person has access to reasonable alternate shelter, has means to acquire a reasonable alternate shelter or has otherwise been offered, rejected and or been disqualified from reasonable alternate shelter.
I I will happily get that when we get to that one.
Okay.
That'd be awesome. So this one right now, just eighteen through twenty. Alright, I'm just going to go in order. Sorry, I'm confusing you guys. I felt it would be easier if I did not go in order. That was a misconception.
Were you starting at page?
So let's just start in the order. Let's start on page six. And it's going to feel like I jump around because these are off. So page six is related to pages twenty one through twenty four, emergency transitional housing.
Okay.
That's the missing the memo that's on Wednesday discusses that.
So you said page six is related to what?
It's related to pages twenty one through twenty four.
Okay.
So pages twenty one through twenty four are the actual code that are going to be before you on Wednesday. And then pages six through ten are the living document that govern the bare minimum standards for safety within those. This is not an uncommon practice. We have it in other entities within the city. And that would be so we could more quickly address anything that we did not see as a safety issue or and make those adjustments as we do in those other documents. However, on twenty one through twenty four, the actual code for that discusses how to pretty much the placement of those shed structures. You see Corvallis has a lot of them on private properties such as churches, other shelter groups. The code itself was being written before three one one five came out as a thing I need to pay my attention attention to. So it kind of went to the wayside while I was working on that. And then I've been working on it slowly to bring forth to you. It just so happened to all line up at once, so we get to talk about it all at once. The emergency transitional housing code, so twenty one through twenty four aims to be the stopgap in between per more permanent housing in the street. Some individuals, I've heard as I talk to shelters and other entities within the city and around the state, when somebody is at this like high risk state where they can't incorporate within the group easily, a lot of them seek to have like a place where they can individual put an individual, why they stabilize them before they introduce them into more of a permanent shelter. That's what this aims to have. When you look within that code, it talks about having like a hundred and twenty day average rate. Some cities like Springfield, they'll have a set date for individuals. My thought process when looking at that is some individuals will come and go as they get stabilized much faster and others are more intensive. So putting on an average of time seemed to be more reasonable with hoping to meet people's needs as they make that interchange. And then again, it this just relates back to the EH in the beginning where that is the building standard for what this code is setting place on where you could put them and how you place them.
So there was no changes to the EH section. You're just giving.
The EH is a brand new section, but it's a live section.
All brand new.
Yeah, that you don't need to adopt. It is just a living thing and I felt you'd want to look at it at least.
Got it. Are we discussing pages page twenty two yet? Because I have a question on page twenty two.
Yes, go for it.
So it talks about no generators. But I was thinking if if we had some sort of a natural disaster, should we have some language in there about without the approval of the city manager? That way, if we did have emergency shelters after some sort of natural disaster, we could have emergency generators available for those emergency shelters? I don't know. I that's what I thought about.
Just make sure I understand you correctly. So if a disaster happens, having a clause that says the emergent, the like building official or the city manager could grant the ability to have those things?
Correct.
Okay.
I like that.
Yeah, I just.
That's good.
I know it's hopefully never will happen, but I just don't want to tie our hands if there was some sort of a natural disaster and we we did need generators because we were out of power for a long period of time.
No, I think that's an easy thing to add in there and it's not uncommon across most of our code to have something like that.
And that's so that's on page twenty two. And then on page twenty five, it says convergence for emergency shelters and. Um, and then on page 25, um, it says, uh, convergence for emergency shelters and affordable housing. So it's that section. Does that only pertain to a hotel? So it's talking about expanding hotel capacity without like building out the hotel. Does that only apply to, um, a hotel that has expanded capacity?
That, I don't know. We'll have Matthew come up and speak on that.
There he comes. Director Rutgers?
Good afternoon. So Counselor Montague, the, that section of the code is specific to just the conversion of a hotel or a motel to an emergency shelter. So it's not, it's not trying to parse out pieces of it. It's really if a organization had come in and purchased a, a hotel in whole and said, we're going to, we're going to convert this into an emergency shelter. This is the, from House Bill 2006, um, it's actually written into ORS. Now, this is pretty much a direct copy of that, and it allows for somebody who wanted to do that, that they could convert it, and it, it exempts it from, um, many of the standards in the development code that, that could in other places prohibit that action.
What ORS was that?
Uh, it's ORS four, or sorry, 197.
197, there's 1.05?
Uh, 197 dot 010, and it's 1A.
That's what tells we have to.
And then it's also referenced in 458 and 456.
But this has nothing to do with, you know, local organizations? I know they utilize empty hotel spaces for shelter occasionally.
This would be separate from, say, a local organization that was, you know, utilizing, say, some vacant hotel rooms to house, uh, if we needed temporary housing.
Perfect.
This is separate.
Thank you for that clarity.
Yeah, you're discussing like APS and all those groups who use.
Yeah, face off each other.
Yeah, that's a different issue.
Emergency, I just want to clarify.
Counselor Newton, Azar?
Emergency housing is for folks, it, can you explain like some, uh, scenarios where this would be implemented?
So this is the, the, for 808, the code section that's being proposed here, it's conversion for an emergency shelter, which they're, they provide, um, uh, definition down here, which basically means a building that provides shelter on a temporary basis for individuals and families who lack permanent housing, or it's, uh, affordable housing. So it, it allows for either of those two things.
Okay.
And affordable housing is tied to that 60% AMI, or average median income?
Okay, that's great. Something that I was a little confused on, uh, was I wasn't sure if this was, I was thinking about the fires and how we had folks up at the Lynn County, uh, um, fairgrounds. So I wasn't sure if this was related to this, or is this kind of related to, you know, House Bill 3115, or is this related to the Grants Pass decision with, you know?
All of this, these, these sections of code, even the ones that Chris was talking about here, um, so 806, 3808, they're really targeted, not that, that, uh, natural disaster type emergency, but more of a transitional housing or affordable housing homelessness, um, type situation. So not, uh, similar to where we're talking about generators being able to be approved in these, you know, in a, in a, uh, occurrence of a natural disaster or some sort of emergency like that, that a lot of, there's provisions in the AMC that would allow for, uh, city manager to approve a lot of things that, that normally wouldn't be approved.
And I also want to just make sure I'm understanding everything correctly. When a hotel or motel is utilized as an emergency, emergency shelter, that business is, um, compensated? Or is it more of like a, there's an open room here, we're able to place people here?
So that's a, that's a separate program that, so right now, currently, there may be hotels in Albany that utilize vacancies, um, to shelter folks that are, are homeless, and that's through, uh, various nonprofits that are providing those rooms and basically paying for them. This is a program that would allow, say, a nonprofit to come in and purchase an entire hotel or motel and utilize it as an emergency shelter or affordable housing, which normally the development code would have land use requirements that they would have to comply with and, and may not be able to meet that bar. The, the ORS that, that was written and is now being proposed to be basically codified into our municipal code, uh, makes that possible, which whether we codify it or not, it's still, it's still allowed, it's state law.
That makes sense, okay.
Counsel, any other questions?
So, and then just to clarify the one, uh, so that's eight, six, and eight, eight. Eight, seven does the same thing where by codifying into AMC, emergency transitional housing allows us to strip away the requirements of planning and building, and we just set it to the base safety standards.
But they will be undergoing inspections and stuff to make sure that they're, um, occupiable, correct?
Absolutely. And that's what the EH document's for. They have to meet those standards that would be inspected.
Counselor Newton, Azar?
Would these changes impact Marvin's Gardens at all?
They could. I mean, it might ob, provide other options for people staying at Marvin's Gardens, yes. I mean, it's going to create more housing, uh, so ultimately, yes, it could.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, for some of these, it's really hard. We're, we're, what the state law has done, and by even just us codifying it in, it provides an opportunity for organizations that would to, would, would want to set up this type of housing. So to your point is, would it provide more options if, that's if somebody were to do this? You know, the city's not going to go and, and buy a hotel and set one of these up or, um, do some other type of conversion, uh, at least currently, we don't have plans to, but it, this would provide that opportunity, uh, for, for, say, another organization to be able to do that. So, hope that kind of answers your questions.
Okay.
All right, counsel, any other, anything, any more questions for Chishendell or Matthew Director Rutgers?
Not on those sections.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Are you still going? You have more?
Last one.
Okay, thank you. What page?
So this one's on page 11 through 17. Thank you, sir. So, uh, 11 through 17, uh, just note real quick, uh, the peel, the repealed section, the 120 is supposed to be 210. We had two prohibited camping sections, and I incorporated the 210 into this code, so there's no confusion, um, but didn't take out any of the actual, like guts of that. I just put it into here in one section. So before you seven, uh, chapter 720 camping regulations, this is a modification of, or a, um, amendment to, uh, chapter 720 camping regulations. To bring in stuff that has come up throughout in addition to, um, modifying our code based on case law that's happened across the state from other cities being sued, and, uh, bringing in some of the stuff that did come in the Supreme Court, but mostly that doesn't affect us. Oregon has codified that stuff, so we have to follow those rules either way. So this is really just fixing after a year. We've been about a year and what, almost two, a year and a month since we passed, uh, the original code, and fixing issues that have come up and correcting some things. You will see that, um, the private property camping, uh, permit was taken out. Originally, we put that in as a filler while I was finishing the transitional housing code or 8.7. We've had no organizations ever reach out to start that, do that. And so with the 8.07 being in front of you now, I took that section out to allow for more extended period actual shelter, as in the shed type thing. Other than that, um, for the permitted camping in us, it's just correcting and fixing some of the, uh, issues we saw come up with like posting rules instead of having it within our code. We had a lot of rules in our code, taking those out and just having the posted rules based on safety, um, and then adding what the fire marshals wanted, uh, under section, on the fire safety section. And then the other additions like 72, 720, 70, that's where you're going to see coming from 210, bringing in the special permits that was allowed through that old section and bringing it into this code so that there's not confusion between the two sections of code, but still keeping the spirit of it within this code.
Counsel, are you done?
I'll do the last one. So then the violation part of it, uh, this also came out of other cases across the state. Instead of just having what we had before, which is cited our, um, section 1.04, which is how citations are issued within the city, bringing it into, it was referenced by the Supreme Court, but also what other cities have done is making a tier step, like the first ones, this, for, for us, it'd be a hundred dollar on first offense, a hundred dollar and/or community service on second. So a tiered approach. The gist of the changes to this code are to hopefully motivate individuals to utilize services within Albany and not just have a, the ordinance be an ordinance because we have to, but to push people towards those services. As I talked with services around the city, a lot of them would go there, A, not feel safe, but B, they wouldn't get a lot of, uh, buy-in because it wasn't, not required buy-in because it's never required to buy in, but it wasn't as needed. So this help hopefully fills that to be a more motivating thing to get people to actually buy into utilizing our services in the city, because we have a lot of them.
So did you have a chance to talk with like Second Chance, Chance, Albany Helping Hands, or just what?
I do, so I've, I've talked to Albany Helping Hands, the director of Chance is here, um, as well as John Phelps, who's their Second Chance Shelter Director, um, on their ability to house people, uh, and their ability to have beds and what they were seeing down at our camp, what they would like seen fixed at Marvin's Gardens, and trying to take in what they thought would be a benefit, um, and bringing that into a code.
Counsel? I'm asked questions. Counselor Montague?
There you do.
So first off, on page 13, as, uh, Counselor Newton Azar, uh, already kind of started, the prohibited camping section, um, talks about it is unlawful for any person to camp in or upon a public property or public right of way if the person has access to reasonable and alternative shelter. Who decides what is quote-unquote reasonable? Is it the officer that's engaging? Or, um, I mean, what is the remedy of that person? Do the, I mean, do they have to challenge that in court if they disagree? How can we ensure that we are compassionately and equitably applying reasonable?
So reasonable, if you look at the Supreme Court stuff, would say, where like Grants Pass was, well, they're requiring religious ceremonies and that kind of stuff, was in that process said, well, that's not a reason to not have, that is reasonable to have to do that. Uh, so if we have shelter beds available and they're able to go there, and we have low barrier, we have high barrier, we have all the shelters, uh, then it should be seen as they have the place to go. And the Supreme Court on the other side decided, no matter if you have to attend a ceremony or whatever, that's still within reason.
So they, they could be.
So pretty much if they have shelters, beds open, they have reasonable shelter alternatives.
Okay, so we're, we are saying as a city that it is reasonable to force somebody into a religious ceremony that they do not agree with, and that, um, if that's a, that's their alternative is jail?
But we're not forcing them.
I mean, what is, what is the, what is the remedy there? Do you, is that the fine, the tiered approach? First offense, you would fine them? What would happen?
It could, it could lead to that often. Ultimately, we strive to work with them and get them involved in services, even if they don't want to go to a shelter, and that's always been our practice. Some individuals don't want to take that offer, and that's, that's ultimately their decision.
I have a big, um, issue with the word reasonable and, um, have serious concerns about, um, protecting our unhoused, uh, population from people who, uh, decide they know what is more reasonable than others. I'll leave it at that. I'm not, I'm not, um, I'm not sure you've, have you discussed that language with the local, um, folks that, uh, do, uh, support the unhoused? I know you said you talked to shelters and that they wanted to, uh, make sure that they're, they're filling up their shelters, right? And that there's availability and they want to see how we can, um, get people into the shelters and off the streets. I, I completely agree with that, but, um, I, I have concerns about this being used, uh, in a way that, that could harm our unhoused.
Just that word specifically?
So, so before you close out, can I, can we hear from Emma or John about this? That's possible?
I think when we have a public testimony next, uh, on Wednesday, but that's, it's up to you guys. I would love that, yeah.
If, if the mayor would like, if you all would like to hear from Ms. Dean, you can certainly hear.
Emma would like to hear from you, if you don't mind.
Good evening.
I love your question. And.
Please speak into the mic.
Oh, yeah, sorry. As somebody that has worked for years with individuals that are unhoused and experiencing from substance use disorder and mental health, um, I believe that they're humans and they have a decision. I also believe that what we're doing isn't working and it's not safe. We're talking about a whole nother level, like system that needs to be changed, which is some of our sheltering systems, which are allowed to do those things. That's not fixable right now, and I believe that when someone enters shelter, yes, we have rules and expectations because we have a lot of people and we're trying to keep everybody safe and the community around us safe, but people should have the decision to choose whether or not to engage in religion and things like that. What we're doing right now, it's not working. Being able to create a space that has individuals that are unhoused, that are working with service providers, is not the only answer, but it could be life-changing for some. We are not able to safely access Marvin's Garden, um, without the risk of getting stuck by a needle or getting bedbugs or lice. And so we can't get in there and love on people and offer resources and support and accountability, which we desperately need. And I think that if all of your service providers were able to really get in there regularly, where people are saying, "I'm struggling and I need help," and that may not be right, the answer may not be, "Tomorrow, I'm going into shelter. Tonight, I need to be here." But we could see a lot of progress if people were saying, "Yes, I would like help, and this is a safe space for you to be while, while we work alongside you to access that next level." And it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, shelter is that very next step. Maybe, you know, in two days, the apartment is open. Do you want me to share all of my stuff or just answer on that question?
I, I would appreciate, because she asked about reasonable. Can we hear your thoughts on that?
I think that's a really hard question because working with, um, our vulnerable population and individuals that are unhoused, substance use, mental health, it is complex. It is so complex, and there's not one answer. And I think.
What I specifically was concerned about was, um, you know, people with substance abuse, is it reasonable to, to think that they would have to pass a drug screen to get into a high barrier? Is that, could somebody decide that's reasonable and now I'm just going to fine you for that? And now you have a fine end of drug addiction?
Great question.
And that's not helpful.
Looking at Albany specifically, I have worked at those two different levels of, this is a high-barrier shelter, and then this is a shelter with high and low barrier. I think both are needed. That high-barrier setting really creates a safe space for people. That high-barrier setting really creates a safe space for people that have stepped into recovery. Do I think it's the only answer? Absolutely not. Our individuals that are struggling with substance use need a safe place. Providing shelter is potentially the one thing that saves their life and helps get them to that next step. We have that in Albany and our beds are not full in that low-barrier setting, and I'm so thankful that Albany has that. If Albany only had a high-barrier setting, then I would look at that very differently and say, "We are missing a huge group of people," but we've created space that really allows for just about anyone to access shelter in these different settings.
So before I was a counselor, I heard a counselor on this, on this dais ponder how, with this similar language that we used to have, how we could potentially hold a bed open so that people who have declined that bed could be incarcerated or fined or... And so that's, that's where the concern's coming from here is I want to make sure we're protecting our citizens, not just from each other, but also from us. So I want to make sure there's no language in there that's not gonna do more harm. Thank you for your comments. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And one of my major concerns about the whole thing is I attended the first meeting regarding a deflection stabilization center, or yes, stabilization deflection center, was the, one of the people that had lived experience was saying that there's people in those environments that are providing that drug or causing problems within that forum or that environment. And then the use of Narcan as a tool to get high, recover, and the next person goes, "So I want the criminal element. I would love to have our criminal element moved out of those places so you feel safe, so they feel safe, so they can reach services and get better and improve their situation." The criminal element will be addressed hopefully by 4002, House Bill 4002, and I think the DA, I've been talking with him about it, he's already have a place that your analysis contracted, he's reaching out to folks about outreach, getting the information out there, but it's a process we have to go through. We have to get the criminal, in my estimation, we have to get the criminal element out of those environments so people can actually start to recover.
I think you said it perfectly.
Absolutely. Counselor Dunazor.
I have a question. So a few months ago, I'll just tell you, tell you a story of something that happened. So I was driving my kids home with my husband and I saw a woman, she was passed out on the sidewalk, and I got in my car, my husband took the kids home, and I got out to just check on her, called an emergency number. She ended up coming too, and we walked around for a while, and I tried getting her to a shelter, she told me she was unhoused. We walked around downtown Albany for about an hour together, just chatting, and I was, you know, I made sure to keep our chief informed, like even shared my iPhone location, so, you know, make sure my own personal safety, because, but this woman ended up expressing to me that she did not want to go to a shelter because even though there was one shelter that did have some availability, but because someone that had sexually assaulted her was currently at that shelter. And I asked her, you know, "How can we ensure that you feel like you're safe and that you can access shelter?" And she did not have, one, it was, it's a lengthy process to, you know, if someone sexually assaults you, right? And she didn't feel safe, you know, seeking shelter and said that she just wanted to find somewhere where she could just sleep. And I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think about women like this person that I met, maybe other people, and I know that we can't create ordinances or, you know, that fit every single situation, but I'm really thinking about this woman and what would happen to her if the only place where there was available space had an unsafe person that had hurt her? What would we do?
So again, super complex. A phone call to us to problem solve. I know that we function in a space of like if there's a no-contact order, if there's police reports, one will be asked to leave or be in a different, we would help get them to a different shelter. Our greatest hope is to get people into shelter and housing, and we're really, really creative. That's why one of the codes Chris talked about allows us to create another level of the continuum of care for special cases like that. That's why we have hotel voucher programs and things like that. So if there is a situation where someone cannot safely access shelter and we have another option, we will, we will do that.
Okay.
And so we just have to know, and there's not always an answer, right? Like, we don't want to make it sound like, "Call a shelter, we'll fix everything." Unfortunately, we can only do so much.
Yeah.
But we will be creative, and I think that's why, like what Chris is talking about, we're adding some pieces to this continuum of care that says, "Okay, this doesn't work for you here, but we have this safe option available for you." And what Chris is talking about is creating another safe space, because right now, we're not referring anyone to Marvin's Garden safely. And so being able to create some different safe spaces while we get in there and do our jobs to help work with those complex cases is really important.
Counselor Smith.
What I am hearing you say is about Marvin's Garden and safety isn't necessarily limited to criminal activity, but bedbugs and lice are a cry and shame, they're not criminal, and needles popping up, that's sort of the, that joins the two together. But it's, it's an unsafe place for a variety of reasons, health and sanitation. I get it, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll add, I know, shout out to like our shelter team, man, these guys are amazing. If people are wanting to access services and/or shelter coming out of that space or from different spaces, we are treating people for lice, scabies, bedbugs, we're treating vehicles. We are doing whatever we can at our level to break that barrier down and say, "Access shelter."
Go ahead, please.
This question probably is best directed at Chris. Do you know if we have onsite at Marvin's Gardens a place for folks to safely dispose of needles?
We do not currently. They're not supposed to be using drugs on there, so.
But not just drug, like needles if you, if they're diabetic?
Diabetics, all that stuff. No, we don't. We had talked about that at the very beginning, but also wanted to put a hard line on that that wouldn't be tolerated, the drug use, so we didn't want to give an option, so no, we don't.
Okay, and then for, you know, bedbugs and lice, are we treating the area? I know that we would treat like a regular park, like if there were, if there was an infestation of some sort. I just don't know if that, that's an option or that's something that we would do.
So we were last year going to go in there and treat the individuals using the camp, said that they did not want it and put a pretty big fuss about it, so we disregarded that for them. And then this year, we had had plans to do that again in hopes that the fuss wouldn't be there and that we could actually clean it. So yeah, last year we were going to, but they did not want us to.
Counselor, Counselor Monica.
These are for Chris. So then on to, "Each occupant shall actively work, be actively working with local service providers to gain alternative housing." Again, who's monitoring, who will monitor that? Who determines that they're actively working? This is kind of going back to the reasonable decision. It just seems very ambiguous and could open us up for inequitably applying that standard across different individuals.
I get your point. I try not to think the worst individuals, so I guess that's where my naivety comes from. When I come in contact with people that need help, I try to get them services. I talk to everyone in the city and that's what I work on, and I think our staff does that pretty dang well. So I don't see that coming up. However, yes, how does that function within a system that eventually could turn that way?
Thank you. That was my point.
I don't have the 100% answer for that. I could definitely work on it and figure out a better way to word that. My hope in that section was, in the change of our code, you know, the reasonableness and all that stuff, if somebody went to Chance or went to God's Gear or went to the copious amount of housing options we have within Albany, and they said, "Hey, we could get you in, but we need some time." All right, now we could pivot, now we could transition into putting you here at Marvin's Gardens or whatever, where we have safe space while we get these next steps rolling. That is the heart of what that talks about. And yes, as you pointed out, I probably did it a horrible way, but that is the goal in doing that, is to set up this layer of, all right, here's where we're going, here's how we'd get there. And trying to open that communication with the shelters, which we are working, we have a monthly meeting with the shelter groups that we're slowly trying to transition into like more focused primary groups, like what does this person have? What is their issue? What do we need to fix? What do we need to assist them with? And then getting the resources in that to focus on them, what is it called? I always forget the name.
I had it.
I don't know. Benton County does it, so we're currently working on pivoting that group. The Situation Table, thank you. We're currently working on pivoting that group to be the entity that has connections with all the services within Albany that will have those answers for us, because we will be getting people into those services.
Okay, yeah, and to be clear, I don't think you're a bad actor. I just have to make sure that we're going to apply this in the same way that you'll apply it in the same way that when you eventually retire, whoever replaces you will apply it in the same way, right?
No, and that's what I like, because, you know, code is, writing's a complicated process. And there's a ton of loopholes, no matter how well you write something. So when it point, when anybody points it out, I appreciate it, because that's just something I'll skip.
Well, then I have, you will be very appreciative-
Go for it.
Because I have some more. All right, so then camping facilities left unoccupied for more than 24 hours shall be considered abandoned. This seemed unreasonable to me, just thinking about potentially somebody who could have had a medical episode where they had to be in the hospital for a period of time. Somebody shared with me recently that often the unhoused will get hit by vehicles, and that's, that's a common thing. And if they're in the hospital for a period of time, who determines this 24-hour clock? And I just want to make sure that, you know, the others that are serving unhoused think that this is reasonable. I think it would really suck to come out of that hospital and find my home gone, so I just want to make sure that's a reasonable amount of time.
Yeah, so that's specifically about a lot of issues that have come up at Marvin's Gardens, where people will just abandon their site, and then we have individuals who want to move in. However, we have to do the proper posting. I should switch that to 72 hours, because that would kind of line up with, that would better line up with the ORS.
Okay.
But the reason for that is in there, that that is in there is because we'll have people like, "Come on, what's going on here? This has been vacant for a week," and we had no protocol within how to get that out.
So it's 72 hours after you post, "Hey, this is gonna be removed."
So it's 72 hours after you post it, as long as there's no other crime element there. If there's a criminal element there, then it's 24 hours.
Yeah, okay.
I like that language better.
Okay, and then-
I could just reference that if you guys want. I could just reference it back to the ORS, and just so both timelines are sufficient.
Okay, and then I think this is my final one, so thank you, everybody, for your patience. On the fire safety, back to the fire safety, I know you said this aligns with what the, somebody told you, the fire chief told you needed to put in there? But I just want to understand, what is the impact of Marvin's Garden? Because some people have heaters out there, right? And when we come into the cold weather, I, just the concern is that people are going to freeze.
Yes, so we do have heaters out there. We also have warming centers that they have quick access to within a few minutes walk. When we were talking with Helping Hands earlier, two weeks ago, they're gonna be reopening their warming centers, so we'll have a couple. In addition to, in House Bill 3115, let me find the exact section real quick.
Fire Safety?
It talks about fire in there as well.
A 7.20, Fire Safety Open Flying. I have Fire Safety.
In 3115?
This is on page 15 is where I found.
That's where I am on 15. So do we provide electricity? We don't provide electricity in Marvin's Garden, do we?
No.
So there's nowhere to cook or anything like that, right?
There is nowhere to cook there. Again, we have food services all around. I know groups bring in, in addition to groups bringing in the heaters and tents and sleeping bags, needles, all the things, they bring in food, or they have access to food at Mary's Kitchen or Chance or Helping Hands. So there's a lot of options for them for those things.
Okay. And lastly, I just would like to request if there was any other local unhoused service providers in, that you guys would, if you have any comments or concerns that you have, I would love to hear that too, I think.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
It's a work session, we're working.
Yeah, so if, if you could come on up and, and let us know if there's any concerns you have, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma, Deck Director. Thank you, John. I know these two people.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counselors. My name is Stacy Bartholomew with Creating Housing Coalition, and we are, employ a few workers known as COAT, Community Outreach Assistance Team, who go and four days a week, provide services for folks that are living on the street. So Vianna here is one of those people who has daily contact with folks, and so would like to share her experiences or some information in response.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm Vianna. This is the first time I've done something I read. I don't know specifically what you would like to know, but I do know that I can answer any question you might have, and I also am at Marvin's Gardens twice a week. Yes, we do have food items we provide. It's not much, canned foods, snacks, lots of water, and yes, harm reduction goes there. Part of the problem, I think, with the syringes is, I can count three times recently that we've been down there to collect Sharps containers and give new ones in Narcan, and the police show up and nobody wants to come and participate in returning their used syringes, when there's three officers there. I don't know what the answer is about that, but during that time, folks have stopped wanting to come up and talk to us, which brings health concerns not only to syringes, but we can't provide information for HIV testing, for Hep C testing or anything like that. So there is, I think that's a big barrier. I mean, we're only there once a week on Thursdays, or maybe 45 minutes, but I have noticed since those times have happened that I'm finding more also. And so that is, I think that's a big, big barrier there for that.
I have a question. You're saying it's a barrier with the officers being present, that that's the barrier?
Yes, yes, people don't want to bring a Sharps container that is full of syringes that have been used for illegal substances out. And I, I myself am in recovery and lived on the streets here in town, and I totally get that from that perspective, but I don't know what to do. I can't tell the officers to leave, so.
My question is, so they only come when you're there, or they just show up when somebody's there?
No, they're, they're, they're there often, I think y'all know that, but there, there's been several times that they come during harm reduction time, and I've had people walking towards us, and that the residents there will turn around and leave and disappear for that 45 minutes, and there's nothing we can do.
I will say that, especially over the last couple of weeks, we've had many a callouts there. We had, two Mondays ago, we had a call-out there regarding individuals being aggressive. We were doing a cleanup that day too, as we often do every Wednesday, our CSOs go out there with a trailer that we purchased to take away discarded items or items that were brought in there. In that interaction, John was there, Emma was there as well, offering services. One of the individuals was going nonstop at one of our officers. In John's words, we gave him a lot of patience, eventually- In John's words, we gave him a lot of patience, eventually he got tased. And while we have five officers there, three other fistfights start between campers in there. We're there so often because there's issues there. Not that the day after that, somebody went down to At Home Furniture and threw a brick through one of their car windows, scratched it up to the side of the thing, and ran back towards Helping Hands Marvin's Garden. At the same time we're responding to that call, we get a call in that there was a robbery at Marvin's Gardens. It's not that we're there because we want to, you know, make people's lives hell, because that's not our goal. We are getting called out there constantly because of the amount of issues that are there. That is why we are there so often, in addition to needing to clean up all the time, because it's just that people bring a lot of stuff. That's nothing on them, but if we need to keep some type of very minimal level of safety, we are going to have to continue to go there with dumpsters and trailers and that kind of stuff to keep it safe.
Yeah, and, and I, I understand that, and I appreciate what y'all do.
I was just explaining.
Yeah, yeah, and I know they have to be out there. I know my experience in engaging with folks there is far different than a lot of other people's. I just, I don't know what the answer is. It's, it's tough.
So I guess specifically regarding the camping changes, do you have concerns about us fining people if we decide there's reasonable available shelter and they're refusing that? And then escalating that to fine and...
I will state real quick, before we go down that rabbit hole again, that in House Bill 3115, they say it may not be objected, no reasonable challenge of dictable reasonableness. That's straight from the House Bill, so that's what in last year, when I came to you guys on how poorly this House Bill is written, where all this confusion comes from, right? I don't think anyone here is heartless enough to say that we don't need services, we don't need housing, we don't need this kind of continuum of care. The problem comes in how poorly defined some of those things are. And as we work through this court process, civil process and all that, and better defining it, it's going to be a constant rehashing and coming back with those new ideas or new reasonableness to make sure that it's lining up with what case law is showing. So it will be hard to make it, I guess that way. It's just a great idea.
To answer your question, I, I absolutely have some concerns there. I've been given a ticket for illegal camping before. Then I ended up in jail and had to pay for my time in jail. And that did nothing to help my untreated mental health at the time or anything else. And, and that experience, which was years ago, I ended up getting drugs and trying to sell them to pay my fines so I could stay out of jail and keep, that was me. I have no TMI filter. And, and reasonable, what is reasonable accommodations for somebody with mental health challenges? That their anxiety is getting, I remember being exited from Helping Hands because I could not be in a dorm, my anxiety, and I needed to just pace and be able to look outside. But I leave the dorm and I'm exited from the shelter for 30 days. So then here comes a chance to get another camping ticket. It's kind of a cycle, but like I said, I know everybody is doing the best they can. Opportunity to say, if not for chance, I wouldn't be where I'm at today. And so I know John worked with me very well through the years, as did Emma. But I don't know what the answer is, but I know everybody's doing the best they can.
And that specific example, what she just talked about, of the mental health pacing and all that stuff, that's what that, the 807 is supposed to address, that little stopgap in between when they can't function within a group, or they need someplace to unwind, that's that second layer. Sorry, at the beginning it was so confusing how it all works together, but it was made to all work together and fill in those gaps.
And lastly, I just want to say, I do appreciate that you have reached out to the local people and that you've, you know, you've used that, used their advice to help you with this. I, I would encourage you to continue to do that. Thank you.
Not just him, but all the CSOs, right? Yeah.
I had a quick point of information. So for the harm reduction, sorry, just just want to go back to this, the harm reduction time, you said it's one 25-minute chunk of time each week. Is it the same ti, same 25-minute chunk of time?
Every Thursday at 11 o'clock. And I know we're done by it, because I have to be at Food Share at 11:45. So we might get there a few minutes early, but I, I've never been there an hour. But I've been there multiple times, and from my perspective, and I get anxiety when there's chaos, but I have not been uncomfortable with what was going on there when the officers showed up. I don't know what their call was or why they were there. You know, last time I had them show up, it was to tell people that were in the building that's across the street from there, they were posting for those people to leave. And I can think of four people that really need harm reduction services that did not get them that week, because that's when the officers showed up to trespass people from there, and they're parked on the Marvin's Garden side, and it just shut everybody down.
Okay, so there's almost like a coordination of, of services that needs to happen, especially if we want to reduce the amount of needles that are present at the, at the property and provide harm reduction services. Okay.
I just, thank you so much for all the information. I just, it is a complex issue, and I appreciate everything that y'all do and are doing. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming today. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Vianna. Thank you, Chris. So at the Oregon Mayors Association, we talked about this for hours. Mayors in individual small cities, big cities, medium-sized cities. It was a huge discussion about homeless, homeless services, harm reduction, continuum of care. And when you walk out the room, your head hurts, because we don't have any answers that will work for all of us, and it's not possible. So thank you all for bringing it today. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I will start with Councilor Kupczynski.
Okay, first off, I would like to give a big shout out to our intrepid Democrat Herald reporter Shayla. Shayla?
She's getting the story started.
Shayla, I'd just like to give you a big shout out for getting your awards from the Democrat Herald. So good job. Keep it going, okay? All right. All, all of you received a small book, which I just gave to you before the meeting. Don't need to read it or anything like that. It is a short read. A little background, my brother got his master's degree in philosophy, still meets with his peers on a monthly basis, long discussions. He said that I should read this book, because he said it brings all sorts of insights, even some humor, in how do you differentiate between is somebody lying or are they, are they just bullshitting you? And it's, it is, especially as we're going into the silly season of elections coming up, I think it's well worth reading and just having it food for thought. That's all I'll say. Okay?
Thank you. Councilor Montague?
Okay, I will, because I saw Counselor Smith take a ton of notes during the public comment. I'll save that for you, but I attended the Joint Transportation Commission Roundtable on the 16th. Had some really good discussions and asking the Joint Transportation Commission to figure out a source of funding for roads, a better source of funding, as, as we discussed tonight. Tax revenues, you know, for gas tax are declining and have been declining for a long time. We have yet to find a solution for that. So lots of great ideas thrown around. A lot of cities in the same situation as we are, needing to keep up on maintenance and, and safety. There was a lot of talk about safety, so I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the opportunity to participate in that. I thought it was very educational, and like I said, it was, it was interesting to hear that we are not the only ones that are finding these, these situations. They did ask us what's top on mind, and what I shared was that shoring up our annual shortfall for maintaining arterials and collectors. And that's, that's part of the needing more revenue. And identifying funding for local street maintenance, which we talked about today. And then funding, fund identified for safety projects, for identified safety projects. So we've identified quite a few projects already that would increase safety. We would really like to get funding for that. And then expand our inner-city transit service. I thought it was interesting, and I'll just touch on the, my thoughts on the public testimony, was that the two college students that did testify, both of them talked about inner-city connections and the need for that. So I think as, you know, as we go on, the, the youth will want more of that, and we will need to connect our cities as we keep our urban growth boundaries in check. We need to make sure that we're still staying connected, because we're not one continuous city that just has bus service all the way through. We have to be able to connect our city somehow, so. I will leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilor Steph Newton Azal. I had to say it aloud to keep... Okay.
I appreciate it. I know it's, I know it's a change. I don't have much, I just wanted to say it was great to see, you know, folks that were working on adding some of our, our street slurry over in Ward 3. My son's childcare provider is out there in that area. And also I had an opportunity to touch base with Matt Harrington about communication strategies, implementing a more sanitized process for some of our contractors as well. That's it.
Counselor Smith?
As you know, I am prone to repeating myself from time to time. So I'm going to be repeating a message that I delivered at the last council meeting. And this time it's not me talking, it's my constituent who has concerns about smoking, secondhand smoke outdoors. We all received an email from Robert Springer today, and I'm going to read that into the record, if you don't mind. "We are reaching out to the city to protect us from secondhand smoke, which is entering our homes due to a constant stream of smokers smoking on the sidewalks on 21st Avenue outside the Meadows and Park Apartments." "The Oregon Clean Air Act states that smoking in public is prohibited except in designated areas, and then goes on to muddy the issue with mention of 10 feet and opening windows, et cetera. Secondhand smoke is hazardous to our health, and the intent of the Oregon statute was to provide clean air for us to breathe. We're asking the city council to enact ordinances to stop smoking on public streets and sidewalks, all parks, and any space where smoke will intrude into homes and businesses. The 10-foot designation is a disservice to the public, as smoke can travel as far as 50 feet. There are four homes on 21st Avenue Southeast that are across from the apartments that are suffering from the encroaching smoke. And the homes that are beside us, one house off 21st, are also suffering, breathing in toxic smoke inside our homes and in our yards. Depending on which way the wind blows, the smoke is entering our homes or the apartments on a daily basis. Please protect our health. Time is of the essence. Please respond as soon as you can. I look forward to working with the council, learning the best way to resolve this issue."
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
If anyone has a solution to solving the problem of smoking outdoors, I'm all ears, and my constituents would like to find out what we think about that, and if, if we have any solutions to recommend.
Counselor McGee?
Yeah, is there signs that we can put out over there? Like some reminder signs about the smoking or something?
That'd be a question for streets. Stacy, Stacy's already gone, right?
Well, just a thought, when you said, is there any solutions, I thought, well, maybe people need to be reminded. I live and people constantly smoke weed regularly, and they'd be coming through my windows and I have to close my door just because they're outside and it's blowing, but, you know, it's annoying. That's not my business, but that's not my business for me personally yet, but I was just answering that question. I have my, I have my personal business in a minute.
So maybe three years ago, four years ago, I don't know, time flew quickly, COVID. Oregon put out that the smell of marijuana is not an noxious smell, therefore you can't... I didn't do that. So that's one of the things, and specifically with the Clean Air Act, when you look delving down there, they have definitions of public, and they state that the public is a public building or a public space. The interter... Yeah, an enclosed space. The interpretation of all public spaces was not what that, the heart of that code was meant to do. So that's where putting a sign up, though it may help him, people would have to respect the sign with really no enforcement backing behind it for that code.
Well, it's, thank you. So I, it's my turn?
Yes.
I attended the Land County Fair this weekend. It was really nice. As you know, I'm from a city, so a fair is pretty much, in my opinion, like a carnival with animals. And so that's what I was like, oh, it's a carnival, oh, and there's animals. That was makes it a fair? Is that not what we... But I, I went doing Golden Hour, and I was on the, I actually rode some rides, and I got a chance to be at the top of the Ferris wheel and look over Albany. It was really, really pretty. However, I did get like bullied almost, you know, because I'm short and the teenagers are a little taller. And so they were kind of like, we're in line, and I was like, I've been standing here. And my friend was like, just let them go, they're kids. But I was like, guys, my turn. And that happened to me twice. The second time, it was like five girls, and I just was like, that's fine, you can go. But they complimented me, so it actually helped. But the guy was not, he was like, you just walked up, and I was like, you just walked up. But he had to be like 17, but he was definitely like 6 feet, so I wasn't gonna... But anyway, I had a really good time at the Land County Fair. If you didn't get a chance to go, shame on you. I'm gonna go back next year. It's right by my house. That's it.
Excellent. Counselor Novak's with us tonight, so I do have one thing I'd like to share. And I'll be bringing more details Wednesday night. But I sent the city attorney and the city manager and President Smith a list of case law that LOC has been tracking, and it was very alarming, some of those things. And so I requested, I'm going to ask for some education for us around some of those things that can come, can break, prepare us or shield us from making some mistakes as we serve on this commi, on a city council. And one of them goes to social media, which really was alarming. And there's one that really stood out to me is about county in Arizona being sued for collecting STCs or something like that. And if that passes, that's a problem for all the cities in the United States. So please provide some education at some point. It doesn't have to be now, but at some point, when we get back or if we get reelected after the New Year, some education about those kind of things. Legal Oregon Cities, I'll say, he'll send you the report. But thank you. City manager, I'll turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been notifying you in the Friday email about a guest that we have this week for several months. And Mr. Bill Hekadusich is with us now. He's the Deputy Garrison Commander at Fort Eisenhower in Georgia, and he's here for five days, a very short period of time this week, to learn about city government and to pass to us any things that may be of interest and value to, to us and local government. So if you get a chance, please welcome Bill.
There he is.
Okay, I look forward to Kayla. Her first day of work is the 29th. And I look forward to bringing her in to meet you all on August 5th and 7th. She'll be here for both of those meetings. The next thing is to let you know that, to bring your attention to the ballot that I'm going to send you tomorrow to ask for your voting on the League of Oregon Cities Legislative Priorities for the next legislative session. I'm going to ask you to use something called multi-voting, where you'll have 15 votes to use as you see fit, but you need to vote for five priorities. Okay, so you can give one that you think is really important, you know, five votes, and then distribute the remaining 10 amongst four other initiatives. Keep in mind that these, these lobbying initiatives, these legislative priorities, we are just one of 230-some-odd other cities that are going to provide some input to LOC, and LOC is going to combine all of them to figure out what their top five priorities for the year are. It doesn't mean that the other legislative priorities don't get lobbied or fall off the list, they're just not at the top. Okay, given the, I'm going to ask Chris LaBelle to come up. You know, you've, you've heard, you've seen perhaps on social media that we've got an immediate burn ban in effect. We also have fire department staff that are deployed to fires... We also have fire department staff that are deployed to fires around the state. And in an email to me this morning, Chris expressed some real concern about the fact that the fire season is starting in earnest in mid-July rather than in mid-August. So if, Chris, you want to go into a little bit more about what we're doing to be prepared?
Yep, so I'll be super brief, but I'm sure everybody's seen what's going on statewide. Resources are stretched very thin. They've reached out to, the state fire marshal's office has reached out to Washington, California, and Utah for resources locally, knowing that we won't be able to get much help from the state or Department of Forestry. We've had conversations about mutual aid and what we could do to help each other. So we have contingency plans in place, and then we made a collective decision as Lead County Fire Chiefs to put a burn ban into effect over the weekend. We don't know how long that's going to go for, but just given what's going on in the landscape, it felt like the right decision to do. So I will keep Peter aware of when that goes out of effect and that he can address the council and let them know as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions if he had any.
We want your people to be safe and not in harm's way. Of course, they have to be at some point, but to support them, it will support you and your mission.
Appreciate that very much.
Chief, any current information as to when the current team that we've loaned to other jurisdictions, when they're coming back?
Great question. So currently, right now, we have Sandy Roberts deployed with the incident management team. And then we have a team from Lead County that is over at the Lone Rock Fire, and we were going to do a crew swap-out tomorrow. So right now, currently, they ask that resources be available for 14 days, and our current crew that's over there, they've met their 14 days. So we're going to load them up on a bus tomorrow at the fairgrounds, drive them over, they'll leave the equipment in place, and then we'll swap out crews. And really, at this point, we don't really know. And we'll have one of our division chiefs, Ray Wildridge, he'll be leading that group over there. And so those will be the only AFD resources that are out, Sandy and Ray. And no date at this point of when they'll return.
It's in Morrell County?
What's that?
The Lone Rock Fire's in Morrell County, correct?
Yes, over by Cogdon.
Yeah.
Yep.
Counselor Monague?
I'd just like to request, as we go through fire season now, can we just get regular updates so we can keep the public aware? And if we can share those on social media, so we can try to, I mean, I can share them with my following.
We do, I put them in the Friday email. So oftentimes, we'll talk about who's deployed, who's come back, what equipment we sent out, if it's out of state or in-state. There's a lot of information included.
Thank you very much.
And I don't know if you know this, but there's a fireman gave me this app, told me to download something called Watch Duty. It shows every fire you can click on and see where it's at, and it looks like the West Coast is up in smoke. It's ridiculous. Thank you, Fire Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And lastly, I'd like to ask Jerry Drum to come forward. I asked him, you were concerned about some of the events that have been happening at Marvin's Garden. You heard that police officers are often there. It is ending up soaking up a lot of our time. Police officers don't just go there to go there, they get called there for a wide variety of reasons, and unfortunately, very often, they get called up there. So I'll get to you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just did a quick search of how many times we, the police department has responded to Marvin's Gardens for criminal reports. We've been there 22 times since the beginning of July, and for criminal reports. Our community service officers go there every day with the idea in mind, let's talk to our, all these folks about cleaning up their things. And they're met with resistance, they're met with anger that we're there to try and help them clean up. So it's, you heard about a tasing that happened, I think Christian Del mentioned a tasing that we had to tase somebody. On the 15th, one of our officers, responding to one of those criminal reports, sustained a concussion as a result of getting punched in the face by somebody that lived there. So, you know, we talk about it not being safe for people going in there. Our officers are feeling that as well, that they have to go in there with that unsafe thing in their mind. And so that's one of the, one of the things we're experiencing from the police department standpoint.
Go ahead, Counselor Monague.
All the questions today. So I'm wondering how that compares to responses throughout the community if those individuals were out on the streets and not in one place? I understand there's probably some volatility because everybody's in one place, but how many calls are we not getting because they're not sleeping on, you know, or on private property somewhere or fighting, trying to fight other people in the public?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to guess what that is, but I do know, I do know a lot of the, not a lot, some of the conflicts that happen there are because they're so in such close quarters. That is a reality.
Thank you.
Thanks, Captain.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I think our city attorney has something to add.
City Attorney, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on just a couple of things that we've been talking about today. And then following up on what Officer Jerry Drum said, it was that, that was actually, that did happen while we were actually in a meeting the other day in here discussing some of the homeless issues. And there was a female officer who was hit, punched in the face by a man, who sustained a concussion. I also would remind council and the public that, starting September 1st, as a result of House Bill 4002, drug use, open drug use is going to be illegal and going to be criminal again. So that is going to have an impact on not only a place like Marvin's Gardens, but in the public in general, because, you know, the state has adopted or passed 4002. And then finally, when we were talking about the roads in the first presentation today, one of the options we were talking about was a bond measure. And I wanted to just give you a caution on something like that, and I started to do that the last time we brought this up. But as you know, we're in a lawsuit right now of the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association, where the issue is about bonded debt. And I could think of an example, as I was sitting here today, about going out for a bond measure to fund roads. And that would be something equivalent of what is happening right now with this case, and that is, if we went out for a bond to fund roads today, and we say we were going to pay that bond back over 10 years, and five years from now, the state came in and said, next year on July 1, whatever you're paying to fund roads, you must continue to do that each year moving forward. And we were paying back that bond, and the court said, well, that's part of the money that you have to continue funding. Where would we get the rest of that, where would we get that money to continue funding roads as we move forward, when that bond, when that debt was retired? And that's kind of the question we're asking the courts to decide right now when it comes to the Orla case, which is, does bonded debt count towards that calculation? And if the court says it does, and we're hoping it doesn't, but if the court says it does, that's going to have a chilling effect, I think, on cities going out for bonds that, because you never know what the state's going to do in that time during, when the bond debt's being paid back. But anyway, that was just some thoughts I had, so.
All right, thank you. At this point, I will now adjourn the meeting. See you all Wednesday night, 6 o'clock.